In time of uncertainty, I would call this town and plan to special court sudden meeting to order as you can raise the police.
United States of America, and to your republic which stands on one nation, one ground, united as one for liberty and justice.
All right, Dave. Anything, ma'am?
Thank you, Dave.
Your business is considering act on and possible adjustments, town and plan to 2025-26. Just for an notice that he had heard something that we wouldn't ensure that we verified by way of our adjustments, that we would have to ask for the board of finance to approve the 1.2 million out of fund balance as part of this. We had a cut gotten from Lord Ryan's is cut for $225,000. I can read to you anything, Paul, does anybody get a copy of anything on?
What do you need?
Oh, you want to come over? Okay, we're going to park it. We went through all the other possible cuts. These are...
They can't be that close together.
I think the issue is that microphone being close to that.
Okay, thank you. So our department didn't say they talked about the possible cuts, so we're leaving off to you. The census vehicle spends 500 hours, parking salaries and tax office 2,500. Parking salaries and tax office 2,500, one court general maintenance 5,000. Highway supplies for overtime 5,000, highway vehicle 3,000. I'll come back to that in a minute. Planning supplies 200, planning travel 200, planning training 200. Engineering firms 2,500, engineering PNS 4 2,500. Recreation park maintenance 5,000, recreation marketing 5,000. Recreation park head 1,800, recreation assistant, recreation director of 2,000, recreation marketing 5,000. U.S. Plaid 700, American Legion ambulance 20,000. So that was, that would include... Grand toll 61,000. Cuts. Additional numbers, we were looking from the Plainfield Police Department and the Plainfield Police has been doing many things here. We have custodian 12,000, 881, police salaries 32,000, 137, overtime 6,048, training equipment exam is 11,500, sick day incentive 5,515, building utilities 3,750, vehicle expense 1,240. Grand toll for the lease pension cuts are 91,000, 974. I would like to have, take a minute to make sure we have the numbers correct.
I'm against taking anything from the police at all.
I understand that. I can tell you that this came from the chief.
I saw you. I understand anything from the chief, but doesn't make it that agreeable.
Sick day incentive was... 5,110. And that there, when we started with these, obviously we were thinking as well.
I want to talk with Andy now.
Okay.
Yeah. And I just got my work before coming this afternoon to make sure that I did have that and I don't have anything in that book that says I didn't do it. And he says you had it this afternoon, you did, you did the bottom, that's correct?
11:00.
Okay. Because I've heard before, just to make other order, it's not a quarter.
All right, the other thing was...
I don't know. It's probably just, I think it's just because what I needed to do.
Okay.
Yeah, just have one. I can speak really loud.
Okay.
One comment on that, the recreation marketing, we have to admit twice.
You have a copy of that that I can be looking at or I don't have it? This is all from the police department. What about the rest of the department ahead?
Just walk down, I'll put you in some math like that.
Do you do that?
What's the total? We have 2.5.
There's 200,000 for the recreation station.
We'll get to that.
Not having this stuff ahead of time is a real problem, considering how late I picked this up. The fact that I couldn't look at this beforehand and I have to think of this year and in the next 10 minutes. This isn't the first time this has happened. And while I understand, I don't think you value input from others, having other opinions, I do think it helps if someone was to have this and be able to comment on it in advance.
Are you saying I don't value it?
I don't feel you do. No, I don't. If you did, you would have had, this would have been, this would have been something that would have been a priority to you.
Can we get through the department?
Yep, go for it.
I think I'm ready. What was being proposed was changing the Plainfield Police Department budget and we have listed as custodian 12,000, 881, police salaries 32, 137, overtime 6,048, training equipment exam is 11,500, sick day incentive 5,515, building utilities 3,750, vehicle expense 1,240. And the grand toll for the pension will be 91,000, 974. That should bring us up to 163,900.
Didn't we already take 100,000 from that pension?
Yes, we did.
So now we're going to take 200,000 from the pension for the police department?
Correct. Which we would also look to put back in for next year to make some more.
Again, next year, we'll put it till next year where, if we have a hard time passing a budget this year, what do you think is going to happen when we got to put that 200,000 into next year? I know it's a, we'll worry about that then, but we should be worrying about it now.
Think you heard me say something earlier, Peggy, about two companies that are coming in bringing...
I am not going...
That's a lot of revenue.
Okay, that's an irrelevant factor because it's not an answer.
Will you ask the question about next year or I'm answering it?
Yeah, you're answering me about essentially what we could have next year. You just said to take, next year we have, we'll have to 191,000 for the police pension and these companies are coming in.
We are going to worry about this year's budget now?
I'm going to worry about this budget, this year's budget and next year's budget.
I gave 163,900 from the police and 61,100 for grand toll of 225,000. You said there was one error though?
Recreation marketing was twice 5,000.
Most of the salaries were... We were taking out their salaries 32, 137. I would suggest an additional 5,000 then from the rec park maintenance, making the grand toll 10,000 versus 5.
Is the rec department heads still on it? An assistant rep?
They're all still on it for cuts.
I have a question about both of those. There's already a decrease on both of those. They're willing to take more.
Yes, they talked about that today.
I question engineering firm.
That's part of the engineer, when he has specialties that he can't do, we usually hire somebody else. He do that all the time.
I know. Take anything, anything from that and it lowers the...
Taking anything from your...
Do you want to know, I think we should make a call? Sure. All right. I think that we should eliminate the clean resource staff for this position of 55,000, even though we're going to need dollars, I get it. I think selectmen should take a pay freeze just to tell, show the people that, all look like them, by the way, just to show the people that we understand where they're coming from and how they, how they are needing to adjust their budget. I think we should cut 200,000 from the transfer station because I don't think that's needed and I'm pretty sure we're getting in trouble with that. And I agree with all the annuals portion of it. And 15,000 from the recreation department, but that's in here, so. So we agree on the American Legion and the 15,000 from the rec department. And actually, your rec department would need more, so. But I don't think we should be touching the police department, they've already get given over 200,000 dollars just in pension alone. Not that, not that there's not adjustments we can make everywhere, I just don't think they should be there for this year and I didn't have a lot of time to look this over to you. Considering I didn't have paper.
You understand that with my thoughts, I appreciate the fact you came with yours.
I did. I do have a question. On the recreation department, there is a line where it's going up 14,400, which is 52% increase for sick and vacation accrual. Is that because they're no longer 1099 employees? Yep. Can I print it out from Kelly's afternoon?
Can your question be in words?
Is it going up for $2,000 because the recreation people are, or doing part-time yoga, whatever?
No.
Okay, so that's not because they're not 1099 employees? That's great question. Thank you. And one other thing I would actually add a thousand back into Project Pin, that's my thing. We just had a bipartisan thing at, at Rorbury Park to collect stuff for Project Pin. Taking much, when they, the need's so great, taking $1,000 from them, I think we should add that back there. That might be great.
I don't have a suggestion. I'm asking as though if you, giving me another area where you'd take a thousand from.
We're taking, I take a thousand from the recreation department because you just up that in there.
Where?
How about the pool? The pool coordinator, if we have an increase of 3,753 dollars in, at the pool coordinator. Is there some way we can mitigate that?
Yeah, you're taking $1,000 out of salary.
I'm not thinking that's, I'd say, okay, so then let's take $1,000 out of the recreation department then. And it has, that line of the recreation department has gone up significantly over the last couple of years. And I'm not against, I'm not against recreation in any way, shape or form. I think what the children need to stay as active as possible. But just in this, it's an 8% increase. I mean, we're cutting everybody else and everything else.
And there are more programs going in there, but...
I, I'm, I think we need more programs, but we have wants versus needs.
Yeah, where, what line I would like to pick it up.
Again, the pool coordinator, we've given her an 8% raise. Did you?
That's what your motion is. And that's part of your discussion that's mine?
My discussion, yes. Or we can take it from the part-time salaries from summer rec. I mean, that's gone up 353% but I think that, I think you should explain that before as to where, to that it's because she's broken out things differently than we've done in the past.
So which would you prefer, pool coordinator or rec department?
Either one.
I asked you a question on this. If you want to put Project Pin back in, you can put United Services back in too because they do a lot for the town.
Point.
And that's three grand.
Point.
Just saying.
Oh, good point.
I mean, the American Legion ambulance, we have to have, that's...
Yep.
That's not wrong. I believe that's a necessity. By statute, so.
But have we, have we asked them what went flying, their budget had to be 20,000? Do we know what that is scale? Do we know how they came to that figure?
Their budget continues to increase, there's more work with less, I think they all down to why they're going to this point. Medicaid is also part of their issues because they're not getting all the funding, money back from the Medicaid to keep the design and pay it.
There was a point when we didn't fund the American Legion ambulance at all and that was not good, so.
They're doing it for free for many, many years.
They weren't doing it for free. But they were doing it for less, they were, yeah, they were doing it with less money and they were, it wasn't, it was...
Make counts on that, so United Services come up to half a million dollars.
I think their budget's 8,000. I just was wondering what the 20,000 increase was and if you knew why their budget needed to increase.
They're barely breaking even now.
20,000, you cut that one in your original budget.
The assurances and benefits are all there.
Nor do you second vacation accrual, that's my question, that's why my question was. So we only have to cut 225,000. We could cut the 200 from the transfer station and...
No.
You can't?
No, that's not part of our budget. That's part of the fund balance.
Well, you have the fund balance listed at the bottom of the...
That's something else. I plan to do, and I have, I stand a motion, the line, line to the ETR, listed inclusive of your request for 3,000 dollars back in Project Pin and taking that $1,000 off the pool coordinator. I then also have a second part of that, which would be then to ask and request for 1.2 million dollars to take out of the fund balance, but it's to be given to the board of finance. And the third item would be to then make these cuts in the fund balance.
I think it would be easier if we instead of the pool coordinator, the part-time summer salaries from the rec department, it would be easier to cut $1,000 from there. Okay?
I have these written so far. Except that, as you just said.
I think you actually cross-talked that off, additional was... We cross-talked that in rec from here, inclusive of these two items to get the attention. So we ended up being on 63,900 and the rest, how quick, all of that, you got the police, the remainder comes out of the 61,000 and then the market. 61,100. How about 63,900? Figure if you want 25,000. I'll be changing, putting $1,000 back in, swapping it out for $1,000 of part-time summer rec.
Look, the list that we have here is nickel and dime, nickel and dime.
Not yet. Next time.
So often, police's pension is out. No.
There's more things to it than that, because we...
The ones in red?
Yes.